I'd like to call this meeting the Sholo City Council to order, show that all council members are present except for the Vice Mayor's been asked to be excused and Councilman Adams. Thank you all for joining us. Like I said, we'll have another meeting in a couple of weeks. We appreciate you coming on down. Next item on the agenda is I've asked Councilman Alsapp to lead us in the invocation followed by myself and the pledge. If you'd all like to stand and join us, please.
Our Heavenly Father, we just thank you for letting us be here tonight. And we just thank you for letting us get all the distractions of the day away so we can do what needs to be done for the city of Sholo. We just ask that you bless each one of us as we're here tonight to make sure that things are done correctly and honestly and wisely. We just ask that you protect us and guide us, each one of us that live here in the city of Sholo, and each one of us on this council and our staff and our people that work for the city of Sholo. We ask that you protect and defend the people that's out there serving this country, both at home and abroad. We just ask you have a safe trip home. We thank you for the rain, but we ask that you wouldn't give us so much at one time. But thank you for the moisture and the green grass and the things of life that we need around here for the city of Sholo and for the people to survive. We just ask all this in your precious name.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilman Alsapp. Appreciate that. Alrighty, next item on the agenda is called to the public, any citizen desire to speak on a matter that is within jurisdiction of the city council may do so at this time. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person and shall be addressed to the city council as a whole and not to any individual member. At the conclusion of the call to public, individual city council members may respond to criticism made by those who have spoken. I've only got one so far. Mr. Lara. Your name and address for the record, please.
I have bad knees, that's why I'm slow.
Well, I should have had you start coming up earlier, so it's my fault.
My name is Freddie Lara. I live at 1001 East Union, right around the corner here. And ready? I'll write it down so I don't forget, you know, when you get elderly. I need to inform the elected officials about the condition of our drainage dishes. We need help. If you have not been to the intersection of Union and 11th, you need to go. We call it the swamp area. It's the residence, that's what we call it. You are the ones we turn to to get things done. The drainage dish in this intersection is a big problem. The problem starts uphill from this intersection. We have always had a problem with growing in the cities and the drainage dishes. We have asked them to clean them at least once a year. I have a picture of the drainage ditch, the way it looks right now. Do you want it?
Absolutely.
Okay, you can give it to Nicole if you want. Okay. And we just want to know, why do we have to wait until something tragic happens before we do something? The most important thing that we have is on 11th Street, between 11th and Union and 11th and Hill, we have kids that ride their bikes and their skateboards up and down. But we have this ditch that runs along the side of the road, along that same 11th Street. And sometimes it runs pretty good. And we're just afraid that somebody's going to get hurt there. There is no obstructions to keep kids out or anybody out of the ditch or anything. So we just want help. And and we just want to know, if somebody gets hurt in that ditch, who is responsible? Who do we go to? Then I found out the city owns the ditch. Okay? So there's no, there's no type of fencing or anything to keep anybody out of there. And it's just real dangerous. And I've talked to the city, and they tell us that we live in a low area. So we have to live with the flooding or whatever. But then I figure if we, if we live in a low area, and we're right around the corner here, I mean, City Hall and the library are in the lower area also. So why can't we work together and get all these ditches cleaned up so the water runs good? And if anything happens again, like it did a couple of weeks or last week, we won't have, we won't have to worry. Actually, our neighbors here are scared. If this would happen again, what's going to happen? So we need help. So we leave it up to you guys to help us, hope now.
Thank you, Freddie. I can tell you, you know, I've met with the city manager many a times, especially after the flooding happened. And we all know, we've never seen something like that in one day. We've learned a lot. I know our, we have a program in place of our ditches. And of course, having such a drought, you know, we're going to amp that program up some more. So we, we know there's an issue out there. Absolutely hope it never happens like it happened like that again. But we know we need to take care of our ditches sooner than later. So we just, you know, when you have, when you're in a drought for so many years, and I'm not coming up with an excuse, but even if they were clean and perfect, that rain was more than we've, anybody in this room seen that I know of. I mean, back when the bridge flooded, that was over how many days, you know? But having that kind of water in so many hours, it was more, whether the ditches were cleaned out or not, it was more than we could have ever have done. So.
But I just have one question. Have you seen the ditch on Union and 11th going up the hill? You cannot see the ditch. You cannot see it. There's so much grass and trees and I mean, they tore down the Whipple fence, so it's half of the water back up. And it's bad. It's scary. We understand that. I mean, every 100 years, we have a rainstorm like with the one that we had. But we can at least try to do something.
Absolutely. Agree with you 100%. Like I said, we're, we're definitely working on it. The programs are in place. We're just going to step them up a bit.
Okay. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Can I say something? Freddie, you know, and I appreciate you coming up and talking to everything that's been from the day one when that happened. I think every council member was on the city manager to find out what's going on, what's happening, everything else. And not to say, not to put blame on anybody, but you know, just like I prayed tonight, we prayed for rain. We got a lot. You know, we need a little bit at a time. But I think, and I'm not going to say blame for anybody or anything else, but we've had a lot of building and a lot of changes in Sholo in the last four or five years. And not any big major rainstorms. And I believe that we just have not kept up with our ditches, them cleaned and everything else. I, you know, like the mayor said, we got with Ed, and I believe there's going to be a transition where we're going to start doing like we do our road slurries, getting ditches and culverts cleaned up. But what we need is we need help from people to call us and tell us where they see these bad ditches or the bad drainage or culverts or damage, where we can get out there and give a, give a hand to get everything done. So definitely appreciate you.
Well, this one, on 11th, that's dangerous because the kids, they ride their bikes and they're skating skateboard going up to the skateboard park, and the ditch is running. And we're just afraid that one day, you know, we're going to have a tragedy and we don't want that.
Yeah, totally agree.
So you could do something to that ditch, to that street or something, put a fence through an obstruction to keep people out of there would really make us happy.
Thank you, Freddie.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah, like Councilman Alsapp said, please let us know for sure. Let's not wait till we get another rain. Alrighty.
Mayor.
Go ahead. Come on up.
My name is Joy Owens, and I live on the other corner. All right. I kind of got hit twice. But when the contractor, a couple of years ago, when he came through our area, and we, we asked him, well, what's going on here? Our irrigation ditch, and I've had irrigation, I've lived there for the last 75 years, never had a problem until the city put their drainage ditch into our irrigation ditch. Now, irrigation is for good water, not for oil and the bad stuff off of, off of the streets. And so that, and he told us, the contractor told us, he says, well, I know it's illegal to put a drainage ditch in an irrigation ditch. But he said the city can probably get by with it. Well, this is the second time now. I didn't have irrigation, but I, but the drainage ditch came down and got under my, went under my house. And this, it comes right over the top of my, and I'm on the end of the irrigation. So it comes right over the top and right underneath my, underneath my house. When it's, I can control my irrigation very easily, but I can't control the city's drainage ditch. And that's, that's the problem. And I, I believe if it is illegal for your drainage ditch to get into our irrigation ditch, which has been there for 100 years or more, that something should be, you know, they shouldn't have done that to start with. But I don't know how they're going to fix it. I know they got more of it across the street where Donnie Whitefield and, and other, and the Whipples and whatever, they got more of it this time because their irrigation thing must have just happened. And so most of it went down their way. It didn't come my way this particular time as much, but it did come way over the irrigation ditch, and which it shouldn't have done. So I'm saying it is, it's kind of a city problem. And but the other thing that I did want to bring up because of the flooding, and the mayor, I understood, said it was a 250-year flood thing. Well, down, down in my field, I've got a, I've got a Quonset hut, and the city's been telling me that I have to tear it down. It's in the flood plain. I want to tell you, all the, all the places in town that got flooded, my Quonset hut was like 38 feet above the creek, the top of the creek. So I think that ought to show something that I don't believe it's in the flood plain, because it certainly didn't get a drop of water. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owens.
Appreciate that. Alrighty, next item on the agenda under special events is commendation of police officers. Chief Provost.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We appreciate you giving us this time this evening. You know, when you have an officer who makes a mistake in that, everybody hears it. But when officers go out day after day and they get it right, you never hear it. And so what we have here is an instance where the officers got it right, and we want you to hear it. And so because of that, we're here to commend a couple of our officers for handling a situation that could have gone very bad very quickly. But because of the way they handled it based upon their training, the use of their equipment, their tactical deployment, it went off perfectly. So with that, on June 17th, 2021, approximately 1:54 in the morning, Officers LaRue and Barber responded to circle case south on White Mountain Road, reference a suspicious subject. When they arrived, Officer Barber was immediately confronted and threatened by a man wielding a straight knife, a straight bladed knife. Both officers remained calm, and Officer Barber began to issue orders to drop the knife. When his instructions were ignored and it became clear the man was not going to stop, Officer Barber used his taser while Officer LaRue provided cover. The taser immobilized the subject and he was immediately taken into custody. Once secured, the man who appeared to have mental health issues was provided first aid and emergency medical services. This event could easily have turned into a deadly force situation. Officers Barber and LaRue showed great restraint, appropriately deployed less lethal options, and provided immediate care once the subject was detained. The quick thinking, tactical deployment, and appropriate application of force by these officers demonstrated the highest standards of police service. For this reason, Officer LaRue and Officer Barber are being awarded a formal letter of commendation this day, August 3rd, 2021. Mayor?
And it's my privilege to hand you your certificate, Officer LaRue. Thank you, buddy. Very much. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Appreciate you. Thank you all so much for everything you do for our city. I, we appreciate it. I know. Thank you, Chief.
Don't they have to give a speech? LaRue, the microphone's all yours, my friend.
No, I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, guys.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Can I say something real quick?
Absolutely.
I would just like to say, I've known Officer LaRue for a very long time and Officer Barber as well. He came to us from DOC where he used to do K-9 interdiction, stuff like that. And we are very fortunate to have these two individuals on our, as our law enforcement officers. They both have very high credentials, but also they're very well respected in the law enforcement community, not only among the command staff, but their peers. So thank you for that. And I think you all look great with your facial hair. I like that change in the policy. I think you guys should be able to wear that year round. So you guys, you look sharp. So as someone who wears facial hair year round, you guys look sharp. So.
I can almost fit in actually, because there's none up here and some down here. And that's pretty much everybody. Well, Chief's showing off with all his hair, but other than that.
Yeah, Jeff too, or Commander McNeil.
Jeff's got all, all that. Thank you. Appreciate that. Alrighty, next item on the agenda is presentation of community outreach by Northern Pioneer College, Mrs. Wilson.
Mayor.
Yes. Did I skip something? Oh, I'm sorry. This one's me. This is, I'm so sorry. Recognition of Outgoing Planning and Zoning Commission member, Eric, Mr. Bishop. We just want to give you a certificate appreciation for your years. I know how many years you were chairman, but I know you were on there from July 2012 to July 2021. And I can tell you, we appreciate your dedication. How many years were you chairman?
About a year and a half, maybe two years.
Year and a half. But thank you very much for your dedication to planning zoning. That's a lot of work. We, most of us know that because we started there, but it's a lot of work before it comes up here. So Eric, thank you so much for everything you've done for our city and for planning zoning. Sorry, I almost forgot. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. I think I almost forgot that one because it was me. Sorry. All right, Mrs. Wilson, let's try that again. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's good to see you. I don't want to upstage Eric. Back in the day, Eric was my board president for NPC friends and family. So he's not here anymore to think. We have show and tell tonight. It's good to see you all in person after a long time. And the first thing I want to say is thank you to our local business, the House. They stepped up this year prior to the flood and provided three $2,000 scholarships to graduates of local high schools. So I'd like to especially congratulate Christian Cabrera from Blue Ridge High School, who's going to be attending NPC in the fall and studying computer information systems. Ms. Audrey King of Sholo is going to be studying elementary education. And Nina Taylor of Snowflake is going to be studying to be a nurse at Northland Pioneer College, all compliments of the folks at the House. So when they get things back up and running, I think the best way we can help them is go buy a lot of burgers and beer. I don't want to take too much more time other than to say that classes at Northland Pioneer College are going to start on August 23rd. We're on what we call yellow status. So we're opening back face to face with, with some measures in place for caution and proceeding with caution. But what I really want to do is introduce to you tonight, Northland Pioneer College's 13th President, Dr. Chato Hazel Baker, and let him say a few words. And then we're going to turn it over to Mr. David Huish to talk about our new building project at the White Mountain campus. So thank you.
Thanks. It's a pleasure to have another opportunity to address you. So I have been on the job for exactly one month as of today. I don't think I've done too much damage yet. I think that's the bar that I have set. So my name is Chato Hazel Baker. I'm the new President at Northland Pioneer College and just thrilled to be here. And as you'll hear from David in just a minute, because it's such a great time to be at the college. So I haven't been here long enough that I still don't know what I don't know. But I do want to tell you one thing that I know is going to be important over the next few years for us at Northland Pioneer College. And that's going to be really focused on what enrollment growth looks like and getting back some of that enrollment growth that's been steadily declining over the years. And there's a couple of key elements of that that I wanted to highlight for you tonight. One of the key elements of that is making sure that we're working closely with the cities that we serve in on economic development priorities. One of the things I know about economic development and I know about community colleges is that's a partnership that has to be very strong at every single turn. When you're looking at bringing new businesses into up onto the mountain, when you're talking about business development, I'm hoping that we get to the place where we're actually talking about how do we, how do we talk about business incubators, in other ways to actually grow business up on the mountain. So I know that that's a really important partnership. And as we look to, we will look to the city to be in really constant communication about what your priorities are so that we can support those priorities, because that's what community colleges do. And so I really do hope that we have the opportunity to sit down one-on-one. I hope we have the opportunity to talk about what sort of your hopes and dreams are for the, for the college and for the city, because I think that's what it's about, right? It's really about the community college. And the campus here in Sholo is a real gem. They're really, when I look at the fiscal stability of the college, when I look at the facilities that have no debt, no deferred maintenance, it's really a pretty tremendous place for me to be. So earlier on, a couple of weeks ago, when I was beginning to give these presentations, I would take credit for coming from Montana and bringing the rain with me. Obviously, that's turned into detriment in my world. But I'm just really happy to be here. The other way that we're going to make sure that we grow is we're going to grow by looking at new programs, again, from an economic development perspective, but new programs and investing in the great programs that we have. So I'm very, very happy to introduce David Huish to talk about the skills center that we're going to be building on our campus and what it's going to mean for our students. And it really is, as a facility goes, I've been at enough colleges and enough college, community colleges to know that it's the type of facility that really can be top of the line education. There's really not going to be a better place for a student to get training in these areas than this new skills center that we're building on our campus. And I hope that you'll join us. We're going to have groundbreaking on August 17th at 8:00 a.m. I hope you got your invitations. I hope that you'll stop by and join us for that short celebration, because it's going to be a good chance for us to begin to celebrate that facility. And I can't wait to come to give you a tour of it a year from now when we open up. But in the meantime, I really do hope that you'll reach out to the office and we can find time to sit down together one-on-one and talk about what possibilities are ahead for us. So I will hand it over to David, because it's always more fun to look at the schematics and what's being built than it is to talk to me. So thanks, David.
Thank you. I brought, I brought visual aids with me. So which way do I need to point towards them? Okay. Sorry, you'll have to see them later. Mayor and Council, it's a privilege to stand before you tonight and to discuss the project that NPC will be starting here real soon. This path to this new facility started in 2012, when the college had a district-wide master plan done by an architectural group called DLR. And during that time, administration and the faculty realized that we needed to grow and have a place of our own on campus to bring the students closer in with other students than having them over at the, the industrial park. And so at that time is when we started to look at options to create a space that would be top of the line with the latest technology to have a place for students to come and receive an excellent education, a hands-on education that trains them for skills and opportunities to better their lives. So I'd like to go through, you can see this on your screens, I believe. With the help of the city planning and zoning, our city manager and the building department, we were able to come up with a building that I believe is a really good fit for the campus location here in, in Sholo. It's kind of a small drawing, but as you see, the college is on the deuce of clubs. The east side is 8th Avenue, and on the south side is Whipple Street. And if you notice kind of the darker area over here, you'll see that this building parallels 8th Avenue more than anything else. It's kind of a tight squeeze in that area. But I believe that we've done a very good job in trying to place the building in a tight area. This building is 28,200 square feet, so it's a good sized building. And it will house the maintenance department on the north. In the middle is the EIT program and welding with a student commons. And then the larger area is the welding department. But one thing I wanted to point out is that because of an increased amount of traffic, the college took into consideration to keep as much traffic off of 8th Avenue as we could. And so you'll notice that there is, there is one exit onto 8th Avenue, and I can't see the street that it parallels or it enters into. But that is, will not be used except for fire truck exit or entrance. So that will actually have a gate across that opening into 8th Avenue so that the traffic that feeds in and out of this building will actually be on NPC property. You'll notice that it, it's across from the wash, which runs right through here. And this large parking lot, which we built a few years ago, is large enough to accommodate future building in this area and this one. And also, it takes up a lot of the parking required by the new skills center. I'm going to, okay, if you look at this sheet, you'll notice that the maintenance department is, is right here in this end. There is a desire, I don't know if you know now, but the maintenance department is in that little building right there on the highway. And we've been cramped there. We've tried to hide ourselves by putting up a fence with slats in it and that kind of thing. But we've outgrown that, that building. And so it's been a good opportunity for the maintenance department to move off. And so it's been a good opportunity for the maintenance department to move off of the main street and become part of the Skills Center. So we have the maintenance department here. Right next to it is what they call EIT, which is for technical training in, in, I guess they call it mechatronics, where they do like control systems and things like that for factories and, and industry. The next area right here would be welding, which is for 24 students with the newest technology in the welding. And then there's the, the student commons where we'll have the restrooms and the lockers and that kind of thing. And then we have the welding, I mean, the automotive. So on a, on a bigger site, you can see that we've taken into account computerized training as well as hands-on training for, for this facility. You'll see that on this next drawing that, that is a layout of the new automotive shop, which houses eight lifts, whereas the previous only had six. And now we can include diesel mechanics as well as automotive mechanics. This, this sheet right here shows the proposed elevation view, and this is a architect's rendering with color on it of the elevations of this building. One thing that we've tried to do is hide the building as much as possible. And I don't know if you know the slope, but there's a 10-foot to 12-foot drop from the Whipple Street is the high point. And then you, it drops towards the highway, the slope in the, the property. We've taken that into consideration and tried to hide this building as much as possible. And what we have done is on the south end of the building, on this part of the building down here, it will be 10 feet into the ground. The cut will be 10 feet deep. And along this, because there's a city code of not being able to use C containers on the property, the city has allowed us to put our storage containers in bunkers underground. And so it's been really good to work with the city manager and the building department working together to overcome some of the difficulties that there might be on this This last sheet or two is an architect's artist's rendering of what the building will look like in its finished condition. We've been asked to try to make it blend into the existing campus, and so we're trying to bring some of the textures and the colors from the existing campus over to this side of the wash. We've also decided not to put anything on the roof, at least at this point. There's no vents, there's nothing on the roof to make it more aesthetically pleasing. But we have reserved the right to put solar panels on the roof in, in the future to help offset some of the energy costs that we might come into as, as these programs develop. We've also allowed space in this building for future growth. And so that's why it's, it's started out a little smaller than it is now, but we believe that it will be an excellent addition to the campus and also to the community here at large. We've also thought about the safety of the students as they would go back and forth from the parking lot to the building. And right here in this part of is an actual school bus drop-off that we had built a few years ago. And then we have two car drives that go across the wash here and here, but this little bridge right here is for pedestrians only so that they can exit the parking lot, walk across the wash directly to the building. And so we hope that as this building is constructed, that it will be a good, a great access or accent to the campus as well as to the community, and will serve the public and the students at NPC for years to come. Just a side note, our president is the newest member of the NPC family, and I'm the oldest tenured member. So I hate to say that, but I've been around for a while and have a little bit of knowledge of the history of the college and look forward to working with the college a lot longer. We are planning that the construction time for this building, barring weather, is 385 days. So we're looking to start in the middle of August and hopefully end in the middle of September. So I thank you for this time and I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Anybody got any comments?
It's a nice, nice addition to the community.
Thank you.
Hi, Dave.
Mayor. Ms. Wilson.
So, um, thank you for coming here and telling us about this. I think it looks really, really cool, and I think it's going to look really great. Are you moving the automotive then from, isn't the automotive back behind like Sholo Ford right now?
Yes, it is.
Oh, so you're going to move it here and not have that building anymore?
Yes, that's a leased facility. And so we are moving those programs onto campus so that, we created this new building for them, but also to give those, those students that are off-campus the opportunity to be on campus and associate with the other students of the college.
Nice. And the, the second thing I wanted to say, or the third thing, is I actually got my degree from Northland Pioneer College back in 2006. So I loved it then. I was on campus. I, when I transferred to University of Phoenix, they took 58 of my 60 credits, and they said that was the most they'd had seen a college take in a long time. So it was really nice.
And one thing that, that I always talk to kids about when I do have the opportunity is there's a great need for people to be able to work with their hands. I came up through the construction business, a family construction business. And when it was time for me to go to college, I was able to work my way through ASU. It took me five years to get through ASU, but I walked away with a bachelor's degree in construction, and I had no payment. So it is possible for a student who has the ability to work with their hands to move through an educational program. And if they desire to go to college, they have the opportunity to be able to work their way through if they desire to do so. So, thank you very much. Thank you. Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, and I just, I want to thank you and the, and the new president of NPC for being in the partnership with not only the city of Sholo, but all the other cities around here to give opportunities for kids to graduate and to move on to higher education or even to stay here and do some stuff around, around here like automotive and welding and stuff. So I do thank you for your partnership. It's been a great asset to the city of Sholo and all the other cities around here. So look forward to a lot more with this, with you guys, too.
Thank you. And we also hope that we have other facilities planned on the same campus because some of our other programs are, are growing, especially nursing and allied health. So we have some other plans in the works that will be coming back to the city to help us do and to increase our footprint on the, the existing campus and enlarge those programs. So. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, next item on the agenda is a consent calendar. Any items like to be discussed on the consent calendar? Items we'll be considering is consideration of resolution number R 2021 19 amended fee for magistrate court, consideration of a work contract for tank 8B design, consideration of purchase of armored vehicles for special response, consideration of minutes of the Sholo City Council meeting July 20th, 21. Councilman also.
Yeah, Mayor, can I go ahead and pull 7C so we can talk about a couple of things that I like to talk about?
Sure.
Is this all right?
I'll entertain a motion for everything except for item C.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I have a motion to approve. Got a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All righty. Councilman also.
Thank you. Chief, can you come up? I, I have a couple of questions like that. See if you can help me with. If you can't, maybe the staff or city manager can help me with. After reading through this, and I know how important it is for us to have a vehicle like this to protect the, the police officers that we, that serve us and serve other people. I just, is there anything, a program or anything set up by now? Just reading this, it seems like the city of Sholo is throwing 90, almost 90% of the money into it. I might be off 2%. But it just seems like this thing has been used in Navo Counties and Apache Counties or older one, and this new one would be in the same thing. And just, you know, have they contributed to helping us out with this or, or anything else? Are we taking pretty much the blame of this?
Well, we're paying for this through our budgeted money and through RICO funds. However, we are working with the other, our other partner agencies, and there is funding being put in by them through the RICO Board to help buy other equipment and that that in the past we would have paid for. So they are putting money in that way. We have put in for some grant funding for equipment. And then we are currently working with all our partner agencies on regionalizing this and creating a governing board and to create a annual funding stream to fund this team so that it takes that burden off the city of Sholo.
You know, and that's one reason I wanted you to come up. I want people to know that we're not the only one funding this thing, that there's other acts, people or other agencies or grants out there to help us with this so, so people don't think that we're flipping, flipping all the money for it and everybody else could use it. So that's why, that's why I needed to hear. So I appreciate that very much.
Great, thank you.
Councilman Wilson.
So the, the old vehicle, I know that it's got some issues and stuff. Is it to be auctioned off or what happened with that?
That's what we're going to have to look at. I'm not sure what the guidelines are going to be for, because it is a armored vehicle, what we're going to have to do to dispose of that. We'll have to.
Maybe one of our citizens is going to buy it.
My son wants to live in it. He's wanted to live in it since he was nine, so.
So maybe you could buy it.
No, I just wondered if that would be sold and then that money would go back to reimburse some of the money or?
It probably will either be auctioned off or scrapped. I'm not sure how much we're going to get for that as old as it is and the condition that it's in.
Been around for a long time.
Oh, yeah.
Very long time. Thank you, Chief. I appreciate it. Any, Councilman also.
I just, I'll go ahead and let you go ahead and make the motion or let me make a motion to go ahead and accept items 7C on your consent calendar.
I got a motion. Any second?
I'll second.
Got a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passed. Thank you, Councilman also. I had those same, same questions, so it's glad you brought that up. All righty, next item on the agenda is under old business because consideration of applications submitted by Margaret Heath for a special event liquor license for White Mountain Veterans' Tribute at Sholo Airport. Mrs. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Margaret Heath, representing Walking Down Ranch, submitted an application for a special event liquor license for a White Mountain Veterans' Tribute event at Sholo Regional Airport, scheduled for September 3rd, 4th, and 5th, 2021. This event is sponsored by Walking Down Ranch and will start at 9:00 a.m. and will end by 9:00 p.m. each day. Proceeds from the event will benefit Walking Down Ranch and their mission to serve veterans. The license will allow Walking Down Ranch to sell beer and wine during the event. Alcohol will be sold in the orange area marked on the map that was provided with the application, and participants will be allowed to consume the alcohol through, throughout Hangar 1, the center ramp, where the vendors are located and the observation tent to view planes. Event participants will leave, will enter and leave through one entrance, which will be monitored by security at all times. In addition, security will patrol and monitor the areas to ensure no alcohol is brought in or leaves the premises and that there is no underage consumption. Security will be provided by retired police and military officers. At its July 2021 meeting, the city council had questions and concerns regarding this special event liquor license application. Staff contacted the applicant and the applicant provided a letter with information addressing the council's concerns, questions, and concerns. The letter and event information was provided with the application. Sholo Police Department performed a background check on the applicant and found nothing that would preclude approval of this special event liquor license. The application in action taken by council will be forwarded to the Department of Liquor Licenses and Control. And unlike regular liquor license, the council's decision is final for such an application. And our applicant, Ms. Heath, is here for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Appreciate that. I know some of, we had a lot of concerns, and the two of them that had the most aren't here tonight, but if you guys read in your packet that most of the, the concerns that we had at the last meeting were addressed. So at this time, does anybody have any question? Ms. Wilson.
I, first of all, I want to thank you for coming tonight and bringing your thing in for addressing all those concerns that, that we had. I initially had some concerns over the barriers and, and how that would be protected, and you answered that. And so I feel much more comfortable now in that. So I appreciate the fact that, that you did answer those.
We made all the changes that we could to accommodate the two managers and the interim mayor or the manager of the airport. And we've gotten a lot of more volunteers, so we will have an extreme tight security there. We have the Army, the Navy, the Air Force, and the Marines coming in, and I don't think anybody's going to fight with them. So I, it's, it's going to be a very secure, it's a very large area, and I agree with you. As a former owner of two Class 6 liquor licenses, I know the, the responsibility and, and the dangers and the things that can happen with alcohol. And that's why I'm trying to be extremely critical about how we handle all of this to protect you as well as us and the people that are there.
Well, and obviously you don't want to have any problems there because then the event might not go forward next.
Exactly. And we want this to be a nice event for the community for years to come.
Absolutely.
Other than a car show or, or whatever, it's something different.
Is this, is this your last big event this year?
Of the year.
Of the year? Okay. Well, thank you for what you do for veterans.
All righty, any other questions? If not, I'll turn it back to the council for motion. Councilman also.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the application submitted by Margaret Heath and a special event liquor license for White Mountain Veterans' Tribute event on September 3rd, 4th, and 5th, 2021 at the Sholo Regional Airport.
Got a motion? Councilman Hatch second? All those in favor? All those opposed, same sign? Motion passed. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Be safe.
All righty, next item on the agenda is a public hearing for an application submitted by Jose Armando Nunez. I'm very good with names. And Oscar Daniel Soto for a number 12 restaurant liquor license on behalf of El Charro Beer for its location at 350 East Deuce of Clubs, Sholo. Ms. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Jose Armando Nunez and Oscar Daniel Soto, representing El Charro Beer, submitted an application for a new number 12 restaurant liquor license for its location at 350 East Deuce of Clubs. The property has been posted as required by state law and no public input has been received. On June 22nd, 2021, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the conditional use permit, permit submitted by El Charro Beer to allow a restaurant to serve alcoholic beverages located at 350 East Deuce of Clubs. The Sholo Police Department conducted a background check on the applicants and found nothing amiss. The Department of Liquor Licenses and Control conducts its own internal investigation and background checks. Based on the investigator's findings and the recommendation of the city council, the state liquor board will decide whether to approve or deny the application. And if city council chooses to recommend a denial of the application, the motion must state the reasons for denial. Also, the applicant is here for any questions.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, at this time, I'll open it up for a public hearing. Anybody in the public want to talk on this item? Seeing nobody fly up here immediately, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for motion. Anybody? Anybody? Councilman Clark, go ahead.
I move to recommend approval to the state liquor board of the application submitted by Jose Armando Nunez and Oscar Daniel Soto for a number 12 restaurant liquor license on behalf of El Charro Beer for its location at 350 East Deuce of Clubs, Sholo, Arizona.
I got a motion second by Councilman also. All those in favor? All those opposed, same sign? Motion passed. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Welcome to the community. Thank you for opening up here.
Thank you for filming in the building for us.
You need a bigger parking lot. But the building was there first, right, Freddie? You can't make it grow. Fill in behind you. All righty, next item on the agenda is consideration of application submitted by Denise Wiseman. So. Stowe on behalf of Sholo Main Street for special event liquor license for Sholo Youth Recreation and Sports Foundation 18th Annual Banquet at Frontier Field. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is our last liquor license for the night.
You sure?
I think so.
I'm getting thirsty just talking about it.
Alright, Denise Wiseman Stowe, representing Sholo Main Street, submitted an application for a special event liquor license for the Sholo Youth Recreation and Sports Foundation's 18th Annual Banquet at Frontier Fields, scheduled for August 14th. This event is sponsored by the Sholo Youth Recreation and Sports Foundation and will start at 5:00 p.m. and end by 10:00 p.m. Proceeds from the banquet will benefit the Sholo Youth Recreation and Sports Foundation and their mission to support local youth and youth organizations. Proceeds from the beer and wine sales will benefit Sholo Main Street and their projects to beautify downtown Sholo. The license will allow Sholo Main Street to sell beer and wine during the event. Event participants will enter and leave Frontier Fields through one entrance. An existing six-foot chain link fence surrounds the entire area. Alcohol will be sold in the green area that was provided on the map with the application and participants will be allowed to consume the alcohol throughout the fields. Additional security personnel will be stationed at the Frontier Fields event entrance exit and at the entrance, entrance exit to the Beer Garden. In addition, they will patrol and monitor the fields to ensure no alcohol is brought in or leaves the premises and that there is no underage consumption. Security will be provided by the Arizona Rangers. The Sholo Police Department performed a background check on the applicant and found nothing that would preclude approval of this special event liquor license. The application in action taken by council will be forwarded to the Department of Liquor Licenses and Control. And unlike regular liquor licenses, the council decision, the council's decision is final for such an application. And Ms. Stowe is here for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Appreciate it. Any, Councilman, Councilman also.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a couple of things I'd like to say before we do any motion. One thing is I like, I'm grateful and glad to see Sholo Main Street partnering up with Sholo Foundation, Youth Foundation on this event. I think it's a great thing for the Main Street to do. Appreciate that very much. Second thing is, Sholo Main Street, I mean, Sholo Youth Foundation, if you have never been involved in it, this is one of the main functions that helps support all the sports and foundation, the kids and the youth in the Sholo area, not only them, but the people that sponsors it or anything that has to do with sports or anything, anything like that with the youth in Sholo. This is a great, great benefit. I think they, over the last few years, has put over two or three million dollars into the public if I close.
Yeah, we're eighteen years, probably.
Okay. So, but I mean, this is a great, great function. And you have fun at, at the banquet if you can go to the banquet. So I just, I can make a motion if you want me to, Mayor.
Yeah, I got one more question. I'd like to talk to one of the board members. Sorry, Mr. Gaskill, I need to ask you. Get up here.
I knew you were gonna call.
Don't ever tell me never to call you up front because you know it's, don't come before me. What would you like to know? Well, first of all, thank you because I think you've been part of this, I don't know how many years, but I know you, you're pretty dedicated to it. And you, you seem to always ask for donations from me every year, so I appreciate your dedication. I really do. Just to tell me why you're moving it to Frontier Field.
The same that everything else, COVID, more or less. But I think, I think everyone on the board would, for a lot of years, has wished we had a venue here big enough to do it in the town. It just makes it so much better when you're actually holding the event right in the town that it's benefiting instead of having to drive someplace else. So, you know, this is brand new. I mean, you know, we're, there could be some hiccups as far as weather and whatnot, but I, I just, until we have a building or something that's big enough to house this, because you're talking 400 plus people. So the, the tent is, was an awesome idea. I don't, not sure whose idea it was. I think it was Chris Hudson's idea, but it's just, it just keeps everything right here, right in the town. And hopefully we can do it every year, right here.
You know, I'm looking forward to it. I think it's gonna be pretty cool having it outside. I really do. Because everybody up here likes to be outside. So the hiccup part, we'll see. But they're gonna get some good food. I do know that.
Entertainment.
We can only hope.
Entertainment.
The guy who emcees it, he doesn't do a very good job, so. Yeah.
Alright, Randy, I appreciate it. Like I said, thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
I know it's a lot of hard work to, to go out and talk to all our businesses. I know there's a lot of events coming up this summer. Everybody's excited to be part of, of everything. You just can't do everything, so.
After a while, all the businesses get when they see you coming. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion. Councilman also.
I move to approve the application submitted by Denise Wiseman Stowe for a special event liquor license for the Sholo Youth Foundation Recreation and Sports Foundation 18th Annual Banquet on August 14th at Frontier Fields.
I got a motion. I got a second by Councilman Hatch. All those in favor? All those opposed, same sign? Motion passed. Thank you. Thank you again, Randy.
Thank you, Denise.
Yes, Randy.
And Denise, I know. Unless you want to talk, no, it's too late.
She's, she's the motor in that thing.
I would call Jody up to talk, but we're gonna try to get out of this meeting. No, joking. Alrighty, next item on the agenda is consideration of approval of scope revision to citywide roadway improvement project, City of Sholo Project Number R 1721. Mr. Hamsaw.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And it's April 6th, meeting the city council word of construction contract for the citywide roadway improvement project, City of Sholo Project Number R 1721, to hatch construction and paving incorporated for $410,280. Scope of work includes pulverizing the existing aging asphalt, incorporating the pulverized material into the roadway base and installing new three-inch overlay at four separate locations in the city. The bid included a very competitive asphalt installation price of $78 per ton. Staff has identified a project in the current FY22 budget and involves the same scope of work. FY22 budget includes $140,000 for in-funding for the East Willis Reconstruction Project. The East Willis Reconstruction Project includes pulverizing the existing roadway and installing that three-inch asphalt overlay. Staff would like to add this project to the existing citywide roadway improvement project to accelerate the construction schedule and take advantage of the good asphalt installation pricing. Staff discussed the additional work with the contractor who has agreed to honor their original line item cost to complete the work. The additional scope of work will increase the construction contract by $64,658, which will be paid with the approved budget line item for East Willis. Staff recommends approving the scope revision to the citywide roadway improvement project, City of Sholo Project Number R 1721, to hatch construction and paving incorporated in that additional amount not to exceed $64,658. I just, addendum, the scope of work attached, the scope estimate, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hamsaw. Real quick, how much money did that save us by adding that? I, I know it's probably in there, but I would like you to just kind of fill us in on that.
It's hard to guess, really dial in a number, but I would say over $40,000 just in move cost and, and additional contractor cost. Take advantage of somebody already doing the work in town and, and a good price.
And it was already in our budget.
It was.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'm glad you guys, it's awesome you guys think of that stuff ahead of time. Any other questions or comments?
No, I'll make a motion.
Absolutely.
Councilman Wilson.
I move to approve a scope revision to the citywide roadway improvement project, City of Sholo Project Number R-1721, to hatch construction and paving incorporated in an additional amount not to exceed $64,658.
Got a motion? I'll second it. All those in favor? All those opposed, same sign? Motion passed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Alrighty, next item on the agenda is summary of current event. Any council members have anything they would like to, you feel lonely down there?
I do, I do. You know, putting off the clock. She was ahead of me. I have to have something.
You, you have some? Go ahead.
No, no.
We'll start down here so I don't get lost.
Okay.
It's because of me this time.
The next thing that's coming at us is the Battle of the Bands set for September the 4th. And this, the third year of this event, and we really expect it to be bigger and better than before. Bands and vans will compete for cash and it is open to the public. If there are any questions, you can call Denise that's just left, telephone number 623-340-4131. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Councilman Wilson.
I was just gonna say that the mayor and I got to attend the Darren Reed Memorial Scholarship Foundation Dinner. It was amazing. It was, it was the first time I had ever attended and I was just amazed at the public, the, the number of people, the number of prizes, the donations, the value of the donations, the money raised. It was just, it really was so heartwarming, I guess. You know, it was neat. Even what your wife's cheesecake went for, like a thousand dollars.
What are they called again?
Bacon maple.
Bacon maple cheese, thousand dollars. I mean, it was, it was a great event.
Yeah, it was. It was really a great event.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. I appreciate, you know, it, it, people are ready to get out. It's obvious, man. The place, it was, we had less people and raised more money. So I think people were just excited to be out. So it was a great event. I think, I'm not sure the final figures, but we got a couple of years worth of scholarships out of that event, but it's pretty exciting. So. Councilman also.
Thank you. I just, first thing I'd like to do is congratulate the Sholo Traveling Baseball Team, 14-year-olds, 14-year-old and younger, won their first playoff against 10 different teams. Some local teams, one from Casa Grande, New Mexico, Cibicu, all over the place, and they took first place. And congratulations to Mike Fortney and Ryan Hall and Mikey McNeil. They were the coaches. It was a great tournament. I didn't get to see the second day, but I got to see the first day and it was, it was a great, great thing up in Holbrook. Second thing is, I'd like to respond a little bit, but not too deep into the letter that was in the newspaper today, the letter to the editor. I, my, my intake on this or my, what I want to answer is, there is not one person on this council in the last, I would say in the last eight or 10 years, even the last two mayors, that have not wanted to see growth in Sholo and also have a clothing store, a food chain, or something else to come in to help the residents of Sholo more than all of us here and the previous councils. We've asked different stores to come in. We finally found out this last year with COVID-19 how much people came up here and how our stores were just theoretically raped and we didn't have anything else for the people here. And everybody was scrambling to try to get some, but I'm, I'm saying that this whole council is in favor of getting something new, bigger and better to help people here in Sholo out. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Yeah, I know. We're, we're definitely seeing a lot of people up here. I don't think people leave like they used to. So I think people come in the summertime and stay through winter since our winters are pretty mild. So appreciate that. Yeah, we've gone through, we've gone through a learning curve these, over this last year, so definitely. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The city's after-school program starts tomorrow, which is the first day of school. So we want everybody to make sure they're careful driving. It's the first day of school in all the schools in Sholo School District. Anyways, the after-school program will start and it will take place every Monday through Thursday from 2:45 to 5:45. And on Fridays from 8:00 a.m. to 5:45 p.m. The program will be held at Nicholas Homestead Elementary School and the cost is $14 per day, $80 a week, or 200 a month. There are some need-based scholarships available for kids that their parents can't afford it. And the program will include snack time, homework assistance, reading time, free play and group activities. Then on Saturday, August 28th, the city sponsoring, along with Navajo County, a free region-wide residential electronic waste and used tire collection event from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Navajo County Penrod Facility at 251 North Penrod Road. And you can drop off unwanted computer equipment, accessories, small appliances, electronic equipment and used tires without the rims for free. One exception is CRT-style TVs or computer monitors. They'll be limited to one per household. Waste from commercial businesses is not accepted as this is a residential electronic waste collection event. And for more information, you can call 532-4124. Then in Public Works Projects, the citywide paving continues, a 14th Loop being paved this week. And then 16th Avenue, East Willis to follow. East Willis, it was approved tonight. Work on Sholo Lake sidewalk continues. And the West Owens roadway extension has been completed. In addition, we have two crews working on drainage issues around the city. And we're sure they'll be working for weeks, if not months, to come on the drainage issues that were created from the storm. Then finally, the city received a letter of recognition from the Governor, Government Finance Officers Association for a triple crown award. That means that this past year, we've received all three of the available awards from GFOA, which is a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, distinguished budget presentation award and popular annual financing reporting award. This is the first time the city of Sholo has attained the achievement of all three. And recognition represents a significant accomplishment from our finance staff. And it's the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. So if you see Carrie Billie Thinker for her efforts, because she was, she was behind all these applications to submit this. So thank you.
Wow, that's awesome.
That's great.
Thank you. Just to add to the, the schools, we just did a public service announcement about school crossings. Don't forget that flashing red light on the side of the bus means stop everywhere. Even down, I know there's a couple down the Deuce of Clubs. That means anybody heading east and west. So just be real careful because it does start tomorrow. If you can avoid the school zones, avoid them. There's no sense more traffic in there. So that should be out tomorrow morning, if not today. But just be real careful. I know there's, there's a lot of kids that have to take some responsibility themselves walking down sidewalks too. But just be real cautious around the school. You wouldn't want to be that person. So watch out for school buses. If they're stopped, stop till they tell you to go. Maybe they forgot to put the sign out, but just be real careful out there. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is schedule of meetings. I think, go ahead.
We will need to have interviews scheduled for Plains Lending Commission members as, as we had one resignation as he moved out of town. We have one application so far. The applications are due by this Friday. And we're just wondering when it would be a good time for the council to do that so we can get an appointment on the commission. They like to have a full commission when they deal with some of the issues they have. So we can, I'm just wondering on the 17th, how many of the council would be available? Maybe 6:30 if we only stay with one application. We might move it up a little bit if we get multiple applications.
I'd like to see us do it on the same night if we can. If, if there's only one or two, if we have five, then we probably have to.
Right. We're just looking for the availability. The 17th is probably between 6:00 and 6:30, but we'll let you know once we determine the number of applications. I know Councilman Wilson's already out of town at that meeting.
I'm available that time and that night, so.
Over here. Let's shoot for that and see what happens.
We'll check with Vice Mayor Kukavas and Councilman Adams and see their schedules too.
Well, even if we got a couple more, I mean, three or four, I guess we'd still meet at six.
We, we would. We just, you're better to get them off and then you can maximize the appointment that night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have, have anything else? Seeing no other business, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.